Good evening. I'd like to call the November 19, 2018, meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Ms. Weisman?
Here.
Ms. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. Pardini?
Here.
Mr. Erdel?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron?
Chris?
Mrs. Weiss?
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Weiss?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sims, second by Mr. Weisman. If there is no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Very good. All who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion? Mr. Rock?
Mayor, yes, I have a comment. I pulled it up now so I can remember what page it is, but it was, there's a word on here that's supposed to say mileage, and it says mileage. There's two words.
Very good. Are there any other corrections to the November 5, 2018 draft minutes? Mrs. Thomas, do you have the change?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion?
Some with the changes.
Okay, we've motioned to approve the minutes with the change by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sims. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Minutes are approved. This is a section of the meeting for comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes, with a total time allotted for speakers being 15 minutes. If there is anybody from the community who would care to address the city at this time, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Sherri, and I live in Washington.
Good evening, Mrs. Dorr.
And I'm gonna start out with some accolades. I went to the city dinner on Wednesday, and I thought it was an excellent event. Kudos to whoever was in charge. And I can't speak for anybody else, but I was shocked at that when you and Mike Cook talked about a goody bag, I was expecting a pencil and a pen. And I just kept pulling all this stuff out, and I thought, this excellent, whoever took care of that. The other thing was the, I guess it was called a meeting about the recycling. It was, for anybody that wasn't there, you really missed. It was very informative and very interesting. And I, for one, have been recycling the wrong things for decades. And I did tell them all my friends, because the lady that we had, she was from the county, right?
Yes.
She said, this is the law, east to west, north to south, everywhere, so...
Right, and that's where we are now. So it's not that what you were doing wrong before necessarily was wrong, it's just that with the changes in the market and with China and everything, those five core items are the things that we're encouraged. No, no, not at all. The thing...
Well, 'cause I mentioned to a lot of people, I mean, I never knew you, I've been recycling styrofoam egg curtains for decades, not knowing that they couldn't be recycled. So anyways, that was wonderful, I wish that more people would have been involved. But anyways, I'm really here because, as most of you know, I'm a disgruntled residence. And this has been going on for like close to three months now, because I live next door to an apartment that has an owner that couldn't care less, and two houses across the street that there are lots of problems. So I guess I'm kinda surprised at why somebody, I don't know who, I'm not pointing at who, can't call these landlords and tell them that their tenants are not good neighbors, and if they don't get them in line, then they're gonna be held, you know, responsible. Now, one thing didn't get done, and I see Chief Rogers isn't here, he came to my house on a Friday. The next Wednesday, the sign on Washington, right off of Warrensville, has been faded forever. He got one that can be read, and he also suggested putting one on my property, which of course I'm not thrilled about, but it's wonderful. Nobody parks from my property to Warrensville, so kudos to that, too.
These are the no parking signs?
Correct.
Okay.
The one that the slum landlord at the apartment complained to you about.
Yes.
I looked out my window one day, and there's the mayor and a couple other people, and I thought, what are you doing here? He goes, so the owner complained about the no parking. Well, of course he did. He has eight garages and 12 cars. Three of them have disappeared, which is wonderful. But there's still a blue van there that concerns me, because my guess is, when the snow starts falling, the owner's gonna tell him to park on the street so that the driveway can be cleared, and then my part of the street will not be cleaned, so I will not be a happy camper. I asked the law director, and he said, this isn't his daily work, so I'm gonna have to get with Chief Rogers. 4013 is a two-family, but I think they have somebody living on the third floor. So they have five to seven vehicles. There's two garages, there's a slab in the backyard instead of grass, and they continually park on the street, all per, and I'm not talking two hours, I'm talking eight, 10, 12, 14 hours at a time, in the evening, overnight. I had a truck that lives at 4013 for five straight days. And sometimes when I call dispatch, and sometimes the police officers tell me that they might have permission. I wanna know what the criteria is for parking on the street. Somebody's giving out these permissions, and there has to be a reason. My thinking is, it's your driveway's being repaired or fixed or replaced. You have a dumpster, a pod, or out-of-town company. What could be, possibly they be, except these kids are too lazy to move when the 87 other cars wanna get out? And everybody on my side of the street backs in, because we cannot get in and out of our driveways. If we have company, they have no place to park. Chief Rogers told me that he and his officers have noticed that this is a bottleneck over here, and I think that's why he came up with the idea to put another stop sign. But something has got to be done about these absentee landlords. I think it's wonderful that University Square's gonna get repurposed, and you're looking ahead to Wiley, and the branding, and the logo, but none of that is gonna matter when there's parts of this city that look like the slums. Now, maybe it's not near where any of you live, maybe you oughta take a field trip, because besides my area, I found three others. And James from the building department's thrilled that people are letting him know, because he said they just don't have enough, you know, eyes and ears. So my two things is, I wanna know what the reasons are that you can get a permit to park on the street, and I wanna know why these three owners can't be called and told. Another house, 4017, the chief sent some officers over there, because there was a commercial truck. Spoke to the gentleman, lasted five days. Three times, I saw him park with his trailer on the wrong side of the street. Not once, not twice, three times. And keeps bringing it, now he has a plow on it. And I think I mentioned this to the mayor, I've lived in this suburb for decades, I don't look as old as I am. And two houses across the street from me had to put in a third garage, because they had pickup trucks that were commercial. He doesn't need a garage, there's a double garage there, let the two cars be in the garage, and let this truck pull all the way back. And like I said, I really feel like I'm living in the slums, because this was never like this. And I don't know if by law you can put a moratorium on these single homes being sold for rental, but that's the problem. These people are scarfing up these houses, they don't take care of them, you can spot a rental a mile away. The yards don't look like everybody else's, they have cars in the truck, cars on the driveway on the street. I told James about two houses on Belport where the trash is on the tree lawn. Gee, you think they're rentals? We never had, somebody told me it was in 59, I think, that they started having the trash back by your garage.
1966.
Pardon?
1966.
66?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's a long time ago. So I can't remember ever having trash, and I love it, because when I drive over other suburbs, there's junk all over the place, even when they had those commercial, you know, like Kid Mole or whatever those are. And then they put it out, like last week, it was a holiday, they put it out on Monday, and it was there till Wednesday. So it is very, very frustrating, and very, very stressful, because once upon a time, this was a beautiful community and a wonderful place to live. And all these positive things that you're bringing up are wonderful, I tell my friends about them all the time, but something has got to be done, and this needs to be a priority. And I just mentioned to James, when he said, I'll be thrilled to find out, that he's getting a bunch more inspectors. And if I were in charge, one of them would be just in charge of the slum absentee landlords. That would be their job, to go after them and go after them. And you wrote that fabulous letter to that house on Warrensville. I know you probably don't have the time, but if the three places near me would get letters like that, maybe, just maybe, they would become better neighbors. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Dorr.
What were the addresses again? You said 4013?
4013's a two-family with a third floor, and I think somebody lives there. They have five to seven vehicles. And they have two garages, and one of the other neighbors told me they have a slab in the backyard instead of grass. So to me, that's three cars, and you pull the rest of them in. 4017, their only problem is the commercial truck. And the police talked to them, and obviously didn't, he didn't care. And the apartment, I'll save for another meeting, because it's got enough wrong things going along to, you know...
That's the one that's right on the corner?
Right over here. I live the first house on Washington.
I think you should be in charge of this.
I would love to be. I would love to be. I mean, you know, I can remember, as a child, when my dad bought this lot, I can remember him telling all his friends, he picked University Heights, because they had such strict codes. So my question is, do we no longer have codes, or are they not being enforced? Okay, no house is like mine in University Heights. It's not a bungalow, it's not a colonial. It's a bungalow with an attached garage, but the city made the roof be even with all the other ones. Not like South Euclid, you have, my dad wanted a bigger garage, the city would not let him, it was too close to the other property lot. So are these ordinances still on the book, and we're not enforcing them, or do we need new ordinances? Because back then, we didn't have all these rentals and all the, and having John Carroll University take over our city. So, you know, desperate times call for desperate measures. And all these people care about is money. And somebody told me, and of course I don't know that, that there's one person that owns 30 houses in University Heights. That should not be a lot. And none of them are supposedly very well-kept of.
Okay. Mayor, Ms. Sherri?
Yes.
Didn't you speak about a tree issue?
I'm sorry?
Not today.
You got, I know, I realize that, but at one point you came here and you spoke about a tree issue.
That's right, and nothing's ever been done, and I'll have to pay somebody to cut the roots, because it's over to my garage, and I don't wanna have to replace, I mean, over to my driveway, and I don't wanna have to pay to replace the driveway. It's already pulled up the sidewalk, and I found out the other night that if there's a green stripe on the sewer, that that's been checked, because that was my other concern.
Right.
So yes, that tree is a problem, and it needs to be removed, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dorr. Public comment continues. If there's anybody else who would like to address the city, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and speak into the microphone, so that you can be recorded. Okay, is there anyone else that would care to address the city? All right, if there is not, we will move ahead. Next is the reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. I'm gonna steal a little bit of Susan Drucker's fire here, because it's just that important that I wanna say something about this now. This Saturday is Small Business Saturday in University Heights. Over 30 businesses in our city are participating in our inaugural effort in this national event. The University Heights Library will serve as a hospitality center. Bring a $20 receipt from any participating business, and enter a raffle for a gift basket. If there's a store here in University Heights that you've passed 1,000 times but have never entered, enter it this weekend. Our At Your Service newsletter has a map and special offers, both in the print edition and the email edition, so avoid the crowds of the big box stores in other cities, think local, and shop University Heights. The University Heights Symphony Band will perform November 29 at 7:00 p.m. at the Dolan Science Center at John Carroll University. Our city is fortunate to have an official premier wind ensemble. Let's support them further by attending this concert next week.
What's the date?
That would be November 29, 7:00 p.m. It was also in the newsletter. The new chairlift, a pre-bid walkthrough with contractors, will be here tomorrow, November 20, at 10:00 a.m., and the bid opening will be on November 26 at noon. Leaf collection continues. 10 of our service employees took overtime on Saturday to better serve our community and get leaves off the tree lawns. This past Wednesday saw the return of the Civic Awards Dinner. Every year, we recognize our beautiful homes, which is great, and we will continue to do that, but it was high time to recognize a few of the many great people who live in these homes. We recognize several community leaders and neighbors who help make University Heights so much more than home. We had about 150 in attendance at the Jardine Room at John Carroll University. All the feedback I have received has been extremely positive, and we look forward to making the Civic Awards Dinner an annual event once again. I offer my sincere thanks to Mike Cook and Rachel Mullin for their strong work and dedication to make this event a huge success. So, Mrs. Dorr, that would have been Mike Cook and Rachel Mullin. Mr. Cook's not here this evening, and neither is Ms. Mullin, but I will be sure to let them know, and they'll see the video, too, I know. Attendees of the dinner also received a goody bag containing a number of items bearing the new logo. As these items have appeared on social media, we've been getting calls to purchase these items by people who weren't able to attend the event, especially the stocking hats, the coffee mugs, and the plush chickens. So look for an announcement in time for the holidays for how residents may purchase these items celebrating our city. Since the last council meeting, I've attended the Northeastern Ohio Mayors and Managers Meeting. This was held in Independence. Among the issues we discussed were opportunities for increased utilization of GIS. For the uninitiated, GIS is geographic information system mapping technology. While Cleveland State University's Levin College of Urban Affairs is soliciting cities around the county and around the region for introductory GIS projects, I'm pleased to report that our administration has been using GIS this year. I did meet with faculty at CSU earlier this year on GIS, and Patrick Rogan Myers, as well as interns Brendan Zach and Cameron Capooty, have, over the course of this year, used GIS for various administrative projects this year, including the signed cataloging program and the rental registration program, among other things. Last week, I also attended my second County Planning Commission meeting. Tomorrow, I will be attending the Suburban Council of Governments meeting for the sewer district on which I serve as the council's secretary. The week after Thanksgiving, we will be celebrating Lieutenant Keith Canner's final day with the fire department.
Wow.
Yeah, so that will be on Monday, the 26th. Next, that week, I'll also be attending the Heights Hill Crest Communications Center Board of Trustees meeting on Thursday, the 29th, at 3:00 p.m. Regarding the University Heights CIC, we will be placing on the agenda for the next regular council meeting, the appointment of city council's representatives, both the council rep and a citizen rep for the new CIC. We then plan to have the first meeting of the CIC, we've tentatively scheduled that for Tuesday, December 11, at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. So I would ask the council to please identify the reps that we want to use. I know Governmental Affairs is also looking at having a meeting on either the 10th or the 11th at 7:00 p.m., so that may, it may work out to have both meetings in one evening. Also, for the council, my assistant Rachel Mullin has, I believe by now, emailed all of you to confirm your content for the new business cards, your new business cards with the new city logo. So please respond to her to confirm the way you want your names to appear on the business cards, as well as your preferred phone numbers. Chances are, they are the numbers that you have up on the city's website, but now is as good a time as any to review that information and make sure we have the information we want, or that you want, on those cards, and that as we redo the website, that we have the right information there as well. Last Friday, we gave away 100 turkeys, and we did not drop them from a helicopter, WKRP style, but we got 100 turkeys into the community to help make a better Thanksgiving for a whole lot of families. All the turkeys were gone in a matter of minutes.
Really?
Yes. So thank you to 1-88-OhioComp, 888-OhioComp, for donating the turkeys this holiday season. Finally, we are having holiday hours here at City Hall this week, so Wednesday, City Hall offices will close at noon, and on Black Friday, not to go to big box stores or anything, we will be open from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Garbage pickup will be as normal on Wednesday. Friday, we will have Thursday's normal pickup schedule. So happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and this concludes my report. Thank you. So turning now to the agenda. Item A, Resolution 2018-68, in support of an application for a grant from the 2019 Cuyahoga County Community Development Supplemental Grant Program. This is on emergency, and I see Susan Drucker's at the podium, so, Mrs. Drucker, you have the floor.
Thank you. The Community Development Supplemental Grant awards 20 grants each year in the amount of $50,000. These are funds that are generated from the casino revenue funds. And as required by the grant, Patrick's already held two hearings, two public hearings as part of the process. Those hearings took place on September 27 and October 30. Last week, I had the opportunity to sit down with Councilman Rock to review the idea of a storefront renovation program here in the city, and although I've been drafting language for the program, I would be bringing a final grant to committee and then ultimately council before a program's been approved. I'm currently in the process of looking for different funding sources to help start this storefront renovation program, and one of the ways is through this grant possibly. So I'm asking for your support tonight in applying to this.
Okay, very good, thank you, Ms. Drucker. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Drucker? Mr. Weisman?
Mr. Weisman, I tell you, Ms. Drucker, the $50,000, that's an aggregate amount for the whole county, or we're actually applying for $50,000?
Applying, and each 20, each of the 120, there are 20 awards, each of them are worth $50,000.
And does the storefront renovation program have a skeleton at this point, or flesh, or is it just sort of you're working through the details, or can you give us any information about it?
That's where our leaving was from, and I received some great inputs, so I'm just in the process of drafting it. Now, I'm gonna keep it general for the application, but of course, because I don't want to tie the city to anything until council has had the opportunity to approve a final program, but at least I could be general in the application, that this is the direction we're moving.
So we would be approaching businesses to see what they wanted, or we're offering sort of like the same thing, so everybody matches, just looking for some general strokes?
No, actually, I've already been approached by two businesses. One is regarding an expansion, and the other one was to do an entire building, to refast the entire building. So it would be directed towards that. If we were to be successful in the grant, if not, then I'll need other ways to possibly start funding this program. Just so that we have something here to offer, because when the small businesses, when they wanna do something, their first question is, does the city have any incentive program? So that's why I wanted to at least get something in place for the city.
I think it's great, it sounds fantastic. And I'm always in favor of bringing money from outside into the city.
That's my first choice. You'll be my last resort.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Any other questions? Mr. Rock?
Yeah, I just mentioned, so, Mrs. Drucker and I met, this was what, Thursday, right?
I'm sorry, I was just...
It's just flying by. But we met to talk about what this program could look like. She asked for my advice as an architect to sort of see what it would cost to do some types of repairs for different building types and different orders of magnitude. So we looked at some examples throughout the city of, well, what buildings would qualify for a program such as this? And I know we were, and again, this would go to committee and the council, we'd ultimately decide the parameters of the program, but what we were trying to think of, it wouldn't go to anything like a big corporate box store, it wouldn't go to anything that's a chain, but something that's like a small business and maybe a strip center that could be part of this program. Something, we're, the buildings somewhat tired, we see some of the buildings around here, so this could help rejuvenate that, and make it a better place for businesses to go to, and for customers to come to. So those are the sort of things we were looking at. I know we wanna bring it to a committee, but this was just the starting point, so we could figure out, you know, what do these little things cost, and how do we go about that?
And I'm glad you mentioned it, part of the eligibility that we wanted to, we do wanna get an inventory, what buildings would be eligible, and then go out and take pictures. So I did hook in Mike Cook with his camera, so we're gonna go, we were thinking today, but today was snowing, so we need to go on a dry day, so he is, we're gonna go around and take pictures, because we want the before and after pictures as well. And as far as eligibility, just to give you an idea, this program is not for banks, national franchises, or the big, anyone that's a big franchise, it's not for them, it's for the small business owner, or the property owner. And we really wanna focus it to the property owners, because that's how the city gets the value back. If a business leaves, that's one thing, but the building's staying, so we wanna look at renovating these buildings to give them a greater curbside appeal, to maybe modernize some of the buildings, so that's the direction I was taking the program in. Of course, whatever I draw as eligibility and the requirements for the program, by all means, I'm looking for input from council to say, maybe you want, you have a different thought, so it can be a work in progress that way, nothing that's in stone. But just to give you an idea, the dollars are really helped that small property owner rather than a national franchise. And they have their own different set of rules with banks, schools, or like, for example, McDonald's, or a pizza place that's a chain, they all have their different, they're dictated from their headquarters and what needs to be done, and kind of sign in when they have to remodel their restaurants, whereas the small property owner, they're the ones that this could make a difference, for making them, to help them make that decision, to make that investment into the community.
Very good. Anything else from Ms. Drucker? All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Erdel, second by Mr. Sims.
Just to clarify, that's on emergency.
Right, that would be on emergency, correct, Mr. Erdel?
Correct.
And Mr. Sims, very good. So there's a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-68 on emergency, made by Mr. Erdel and seconded by Mr. Sims. Is there any discussion? Okay, very well. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll first on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. And on the main motion?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weisman?
Aye.
Ms. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardini?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Drucker, and thank you, council. Next on the agenda is Item B, motion in acknowledgment of receipt of the September and October 2018 financial reports. Mr. Goff, would you like to speak? Mr. Goff, would you like to speak on this point?
A couple of items with this. So council should have received from the clerk of council via, I believe Dropbox, the financial report for September and October. Both of them would be containing the bank reconciliations along with supporting documentation of that statement of cash position, which is our current fund balance report of what we had at the beginning and the end of the period, as well as revenue report, expense report, check register. And then there had been a question at the last finance committee meeting about cash flow from our investments. So there's a report from our, from Fifth Third, who we do our investments through that shows the cash flow of our current investments in terms of when we need interest or payment of the principles. So as best practice, and it was also recommendation, it was in the audit, council should be acknowledging that you're receiving reports from finance like this. So kind of right now, we've got those ones that you guys have received. And then going forward, you should be expecting to see a similar packet every month. And if there are any reports you guys would like to see added, let me know. There might be other ones that over time I start generating to add to that. We'll also be adding these up on the website. They're not currently up there, but the intention is to get them up there. If there's any questions or any particular comments, as you can see from the bank reconciliations that we're, we're working our way towards resolving the problem of there being no reconciliations for '17 until Rita, my deputy, had started working on those when she was a consultant. And we are working our way through making adjustments as we can in '18 to try to narrow that variance down. But we are aware that it'll probably end up being something that's left that still needs to be posted, most likely to the general fund. Any questions you guys have?
Mr. Sims?
Yes. When I received this agenda and it had this motion on it, it struck me as strange and I didn't have any of the information that you just provided. But with that information, it still strikes me as a little strange that council would be asked to make a motion acknowledging the receipt of information. I don't understand the rationale and I don't understand the benefit. So if you could explain that, that would be helpful.
The rationale and the benefit is, as a part of the larger internal controls, to be documenting in the minutes formally that council is receiving monthly bank reconciliations and other financial reports from finance so that you're in a position to better be able to monitor and oversee, to perform your oversight and monitoring function of the overall city finances. And the reason for doing it as a motion is just to make sure that it is very crystal clear in the minutes that council is acknowledging that they have received those reports. It is a best practice that both when I used to be working for the auto estates office, I'd make that same recommendation to entities. It's something that I have seen done by most entities that I've looked at in northeast Ohio. Granted, that largely starts in Summit County. And it was something that was actually in the detail for, it was one of the individual bullet points. It was in the finding that is in our audit for 2017 regarding bank reconciliations.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And the last part is what I'm particularly interested in. What did that audit bullet say exactly? Because my experience is not to know of communities that have their council simply acknowledged the receipt of information because that acknowledgement really just means that you received it, I guess. And it certainly should not imply that the information is correct or that it has been reviewed in any manner. And when council takes any kind of action, it usually has those implications or connotations.
That is one I'd have to, I'd have to go back and get that for you for the information for a couple of reasons. One, due to the window before and after election, our audit has not been formally released yet. And two, I don't have that readily available in front of me. But that's the reason for asking for it to be an acknowledgment you've received it. As compared to verifying that, yes, those are correct and we're certifying that the, that's how the correct numbers. It has more to do with making sure that you have the information so that you're able to perform an oversight function as compared to stating that, yes, you have actually taken some action based upon those reports.
Still doesn't mean a lot to me. I just have to say, because we could acknowledge the receipt of September and October and not receive November, December, and January until June. So, you know, there's, I don't see the rationale, I don't see the benefit in simply acknowledging the receipt of information by a motion. I do see the benefit of receiving that information on a timely basis. So, you know, that's just how I look at it. And I'm particularly concerned about any implications or connotations that might be associated with that acknowledgement.
Yeah, we'll have to get the exact language for you and that might not be available until the audit is formally released. But that is within the finding that is in the report itself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sims, thank you, Mr. Goff. Any further questions for Mr. Goff? Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't know if this was the point that my colleague was trying to make, but this is a lot of information and I'm sure it's fantastic. But to get it and to just say, tell us that you got it, I think sort of does a disservice to the informator, the information and to the provider. There's a lot of stuff in here, especially since we haven't had a reconciliation in almost two years. I would like to have a little bit more face time to discuss exactly what's going on. And I, I, this is, I've been on council for five years. This is the first time I've received this kind of information with the designation that I should just acknowledge it's received. So I don't know if this is new, if this is a government relation or something that's, that's done. I don't, I don't mind doing it. But again, if, I, I, I think it's more appropriate maybe to set off some other time to actually discuss what's inside the information and then, and then provide it to us and say, tell us that you, tell us that you received it. Perhaps, I don't know what in here is more important than something else, right? So I mean, it's, I mean, you, look, you, I'm not coming down on you. You've been fantastic and you're doing a great job. But I'm just saying in terms of a go-forward practice, to dump 80 or 100 pages in our lap and say, make a motion that you received it, I, I think doesn't really, doesn't really help anybody in any way other than to be able to say, hey, look, we received it. So if this is a requirement, I'm more than willing to do it. If not, I think this is something that looks to me like it's probably worthy of, of a deeper dive. I understand that our reconciliations haven't been done for a while. And probably if we had been doing this all of last year, we would have not had the situation where we had no bank reconciliations for, for almost a year and a half. But again, I don't know if that echoes what Mr. Sims was trying to say. But I, I like the information, but in terms of a practice, if we're not required to, I'd rather have a meeting where we just talk about this and only this, you know, then we can, anyway. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Mrs. Purdy?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the reports. As Mr. Wiseman said, we have not gotten reports like this. And you also made the point of giving us what one council person specifically requested. So that's great. I understand documentation, that's my job. Documentation, making sure everything is available and we have a paper trail. So my question is, instead of having a formal motion on the agenda, would the purpose be served if during your finance committee report, you just state very clearly, council was sent September and October reports that included bank reconciliation, the checklist, all the other items? You've got it in the minutes, it is a record, it demonstrates that we were sent this and we're not voting on anything. Would that serve your purpose?
Yes, that should, that should suffice. Part of this is just the ongoing process we're going to have of as we, unfortunately, in many cases, develop internal controls that have been lacking for a while. In other cases, it's as we evolve our existing internal controls, making sure that we do it in the way in which that works best for us. So for the time being, until we develop anything that might be different, that would be an acceptable way to handle it, yes.
Great, thank you. So I would like...
Oh, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, let's...
Well, to the law director, we don't necessarily want to vote this down. Is there a way to remove it from the agenda?
Table it, maybe, or you can table it.
Table it or just remove it? Can we remove it?
Well, maybe you might want to read the detail of the audit before you...
I've actually read the detail, thank you. And I would, I would stand by what I just said. I think if we're making it public, it's public in the minutes in the finance report. It doesn't have to be public through a vote. So I would agree with Mr. Sims on this one. I mean, if that's the purpose, we're making that.
That is, that is the primary purpose.
So you would be able to pull it out for any auditor in the future and say, here are the minutes, this describes that we've done this. I understand. Can we remove it? Do we want to remove it?
Yeah, I suppose you can remove it. I don't see the problem with that.
I mean, I'm not sure why we would table it if we're not going to revisit it. That's my question. What is, what are your thoughts?
Well, if you make a motion to remove it, I'll second it.
All right, I make a motion to remove item B, the motion in acknowledgment of receipt of the September and October 2018 financial reports.
Second.
Okay, well, we have, we have a motion by Mrs. Purdy to remove item B from the agenda and we have a second by Mr. Sims.
More of a logistical question, can we remove an item from the agenda when we discuss the item on the agenda?
Yeah, just what is the implication for the minutes? And I was going to yield to our law director here for...
Well, I don't really, I mean, you know, you're, you're not wanting to table it. So either you vote it down or, I mean, I, I don't know what the distinction is between removing it and voting it down. You're getting rid of it, you're getting it off the table, you're disposing of it.
Could, could we have made it a motion to amend the agenda to say that we would have a discussion on the receipt of the financial reports as opposed to a motion to acknowledge? Because we're discussing it.
Or for that matter, does any motion have to be made at all?
No.
I mean, although, if we need to do something in order to advance from item B, so...
It would be just to vote it down.
Sure, it dies if nobody makes the motion, correct?
Correct.
I withdraw my motion to remove item B.
All right.
Do you withdraw your second?
Of course, I mean, if your motion is gone, my second is.
So just so we're clear, if no motion is made, then it can just wither on the vine. It doesn't go, it doesn't get tabled, it just sort of, we just sort of move on and it just sort of, we put it on ice flow and let it go.
Push it out to sea.
The more important thing here, and I don't want to lose sight of this, is that we have these reports. And, you know, our minutes will reflect that they went out. This is going to be a thing going forward. This is a, you know, best practice that the city has not seen in some time. And I want to thank Mr. Goff for his work on this to make this thing that I know is, that has been very important to council and to me, a reality. So thank you, Mr. Goff.
And that he's working on internal controls, very important, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Purdy.
Thank you.
Okay, so in the absence of a motion, we will move on to item C. Ordinance 2018-69 appropriating funds for current and other expenditures of the city of University Heights, Ohio for the period commencing January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018. This is on emergency, Mr. Goff.
Most of these are actually the result of needing to create a purchase order for our workers' comp payment that'll be due in December, that we did not have enough money budgeted for workers' comp. There are a few others, some, I'm just going to go quickly down through the list and tell you what they were. So the pool department that was workers' comp, needing additional money for premiums. The building department that is a combination of workers' comp and also primarily funding for the added staffing that we brought on in the last few weeks through the, through the rest of the year. City engineer was workers' comp. The civic engagement department was a miscalculation on my part earlier in the year about what I, what I needed for the remainder of the year. Law department is a combination of both workers' comp and of the way we're accounting for the court time for the city prosecutor. Lands and buildings was workers' comp. We're taking money out of what was previously budgeted for transfers and advances that we will not need to make so that the total appropriations will be neutral. In the, getting outside of the general fund, we have the general obligation debt fund. At the moment, we don't have enough appropriations for the last debt payment that we have for the year that appears to be an oversight in last year's budget. And then in the capital improvement fund, there's $95,000 that was brought up at the last council meeting that did not make it onto an amended version of this for the last meeting. And then we have two smaller transfers that are being approved out of what's already appropriated. And this is just actually make the transfers from the general fund, the police pension and the fire pension funds.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Goff. Are there any questions for Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Okay. You reported that in the law department that in part the appropriation is needed due to how we account for the city prosecutor's time?
Yes, I'm not entirely sure how my predecessors, what line items they were charging, the in-court time that the prosecutors paid. Where we are doing it in my tenure and the way I think it should have been done before is running it through the payroll system. And so it's coming out of the personnel expenses and I presume that it was probably coming out of the non-personnel expenses. But I haven't gone back to see where, how exactly my predecessors were, were making those payments. We paid both the, the prosecutor both a fixed amount for his general services plus a hourly amount for his in-court time.
All right, so, but for the purposes of year-end reporting and eventually for next year's audit, we need to have some understanding about where those charges were prior to the small change?
They were within that department, but whether they were personnel versus non-personnel in terms of how they were paid out, I am not sure at the moment. That would not actually impact the audit because both sets of numbers would be reported as general administration, as an expense on the audit and on our financial reports.
And then lastly, Mayor, I just want to make sure that I understand the transfers and advances because that's a big number. And then at the end of your remarks, you said that it basically netted out. And so I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're saying.
Yes, so that this is not increasing the overall appropriations for the city. We had throughout the course, early in the year as part of the original appropriations, there was money appropriated for doing transfers and advances from the general fund to other funds with individual transfers to be approved throughout the year. Out of that dollar amount, there was, going back and looking at what the amount was when I started, when I started, there was about a million dollars of that that probably was not needed as transfers and will not be made. And so in order to show that we are not increasing the overall appropriations, part of the appropriations have been reducing that to reflect that we're not going to make those transfers. Our budget as it currently stands, we are not going to spend all the appropriations. Part of the problem is, in terms of where I've been putting my focus, I don't know which line items we will not spend 100% of in terms of trying to draw those down at the moment. That's one of the reasons why, working on the budget for 2019, it's kind of taking a fresh look at it as opposed to just a percentage increase for cost of living over a prior year budget. And the dollar amount for appropriate, for transfers, that was one of them that I don't see a good track record of where that number was coming from in the logic of where it came from for the, for this year. And so there's a dollar amount of appropriations we aren't going to actually spend at any point this year.
And last year this time, when we were working on our budget and everything, we decided to zero out everything and we got rid of appropriations from the prior year and, you know, things of that nature. Is that the way it will be handled this year?
When you're saying zeroed out, please tell me what you mean by that.
Well, I think that if, if it hadn't been spent, it was deencumbered or unencumbered and, and put into the general fund.
Normally that would not be necessary. And the reason why is if, if the appropriations are not spent at the end of the year, that automatically happens. That very likely will happen though this year because of needing to go back and make sure that our final appropriations did not exceed our estimated resources. And that's an item that I have not gone back and verified those dollar amounts yet simply because of where my time has been focused. That is something that council will expect to see on the agenda for the last meeting in December. But normally, that's something where... in December. But normally, that's something where unspent appropriations, they just stop being in authority at the end of the year, and so it's not an issue. There are communities that do go back and do that, but in my mind, it's not actually necessary.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Are there any further questions for Mr. Goff? Mr. Weisman?
Uh, no, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just make up one, but...
Well, no, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here. This isn't, this isn't my first-year contracts class. Mrs. Pardee, anything?
But I'll make the motion.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, where are we? I move approval of ordinance 2018-69, appropriating funds for current and other expenditures of the City of University Heights, Ohio, for the period commencing January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018, on emergency.
Very good. There's a motion by Mrs. Pardee as such. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weisman. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll first on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Wall, Mr. Rapp?
Aye.
Mrs. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mr. Eardle?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Thank you, council. The ordinance passes.
Next item on the agenda is item D, which is the ordinance 2018-70, enacting codified ordinance chapter 243, entitled Department of Housing and Community Development, establishing the positions of Director of Housing and Community Development, and Housing Inspector. And this is on emergency, and we have with us this evening, Mr. Grogan Myers, to speak on these points. So, Mr. Grogan Myers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, before you deny council, you have an ordinance that would establish the Department of Housing and Community Development, with its main focus being enforcing the city's housing code. That includes the vacant property registration that council passed earlier this year, and the current and updated portions of the rental program, exterior maintenance, and many of the things that are in our housing code. And there are several reasons why this is being proposed. The first, and stemming from the housing survey that I worked with Councilman Weiss on earlier this year, and this is, I'm sure, familiar to you all, but 25% of the houses in this city were built before 1940. And 75% of the houses were built before 1970. And we're very typical in terms of how an inter-ring suburb here in Cleveland looks, having those, pardon, having those, that older housing stock. And with every passing year, it continues to present a challenge for us to make sure that we're maintaining the housing stock for our residents to have a high quality of life, and make sure that our homes continue to retain and grow in value. So that part of the bold step that you all took earlier this year, the CRA establishment, that was one of the many pieces that are part of retaining and growing that housing stock value and quality. So, so part of this is built into that larger picture. In talking with the building commissioner and the mayor about this idea, one of the things that Mr. Brenner was talking about was how this would allow him to focus on the permitting aspects, which thankfully are very busy. And what this allows us to do then is continue the work of the housing improvements, the focus on the housing stock, and really build a program that not only works on correcting violations or finding violations and correcting them, but the, the goal would be to also build relationships with outside funders, loans and grants and whatnot that are out there. But we currently don't have the resources to go after and build those relationships, so that when violations are found, we can point our residents to the appropriate resources, especially when they're in need of those resources. So, the, the goal of this legislation is really to strengthen the city's focus and take a bold step. Because currently, to my knowledge, there's only one housing department in the county, and it's the City of South Euclid. And you're making really bold, aggressive steps to try to retain and grow their housing stock. And I see this as being a crucial part of a lot of the work that you all were doing earlier this year, in growing and maintaining the programs and the legislation that's in place to focus on that housing stock.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. And if, and if I can add, if I can add to that. I mean, this is, this is one more piece in the overall work of this administration, and of your work this year as a council, with respect to what we're doing to, to invest in our housing stock, improve our housing stock, and improve on, on our housing issues. And just coincidentally, and I swear I did not put her up to it, we had commentary at the beginning of this meeting with respect to issues with regard to rentals. So, you know, here we're able to create two departments. One, that's focusing on the commercial, and on, and on the permitting, and on the construction, and, and things that are only going to increase when we have a CRA, and, and, and tax abatement opportunities that people are taking advantage of. And at the same time, we are strengthening our commitment to rental registration, to exterior inspections, to point-of-sale inspections, and handling housing complaints. So here, much like the, South Euclid has done with great success, we're looking to, to borrow the best of what they're doing and do it our way. And, and that includes having Mr. Grogan Myers head up this housing department, and really take a, a great step forward with respect to how we handle residential real estate here in the city. So...
Mayor, if I may add two technical points.
Please do.
One is that the ordinance is very closely modeled after the building department chapter, and affords the new housing department the same types of police powers that have been granted to the building department. And number two, the charter specifically provides for council having the power to create new departments.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Rapp?
So I will say, when I was campaigning for this, for this role as council, I was going door-to-door, and the one thing I heard from time to time again was the, what we heard today in our public comment, and the housing stock, and the rental, and even owner-occupied houses that are falling behind. And I believe this is just the first step in remedying that situation, and living up to our promise that we will make this a better place to live. And I think what you have in here is terrific. It's going to outline all of that and really make a big difference in the building department.
Very good. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Sims?
I'll just start out by saying, 11 years ago, when I was campaigning door-to-door, it was an issue. And it was an issue that I was absolutely concerned with, and one that I have tried to advocate for in my seat here on council. So I too believe that this is a good step, a good step forward. And I'm encouraged. The question that I have for you, or maybe it's for the mayor, I'm not sure, but it will only work if we take the steps to, one, streamline our processes internally, make sure that we don't have a lot of red tape, and, you know, focus our resources with intentionality. So, this has implications for the building department. And I'm not sure where that is reflected, or how that will be addressed.
As far as how personnel are handled, where, where the location of the departments are, I mean, it's all these things, I suppose, and we...
Yeah, all of those things, including whether there's a merger of the building department and this new department.
Well, these would be separate departments. But for convenience of our residents, they're both going to be housed in the same annex building that the building department is presently located. So, basically, we're going to have building department operating in the lower level of the building, with housing department operating in the upper level of the building.
So, housing, Mr. Grogan Meyer, will be doing what? I know what building does, and I want to know what is housing going to do.
The, the housing department would take all of the, the local ordinances, so housing code portions, the rental registration, home sale, exterior property, or experience and use program, the vacant property registration, and taking all of those programs, and absolutely, to your point, we've got to, I think, first start, and this is something I brought up in my report to the last council meeting, is start by doing a wholesale review of our programs. And, to be frank, there are, there are members of the building department staff who have said, we already have some ideas. We've got some places where we know it's broken, and, or could be doing better. So I think that that's the first step, is taking stock of what we have, and then being very intentional about our changes, and drawing them directly to stated goals of improving the housing stock quality, and improving the value of the homes here in the community. So that you're, and Councilman Rock touched on, this is the first step. But there are many more to come.
Right. Okay. Yeah, this is great. I mean, a few meetings back, I presented a calculation on what I thought the value of my house should be compared to what it is. And if this can help boost the appreciation that residents in this city experience, I think it's wonderful. I think it's great. And I think that we do have to take very specific and intentional steps to make it happen, and have a clear focus on the very issues that were raised here tonight by our residents. So I'm happy to see this going into effect. So, my last question, Mr. Mayor, is relative to council oversight, where does this fall? Where does this new department fall? Is it under, will it be building and housing, or as far as committee structure is concerned?
Oh, that's, that's an interesting point. Yeah, you know, I would think that perhaps both would fall under, under building, and I am spitballing here, because I didn't have this conversation with our building department chair, and perhaps I should have, and still could, so...
And it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but it's a question that I think is important.
Right. And, and I think it should also not be lost, that, that, that the community, that the community development coordinator aspect, which historically has been an important position in our city, and one that's been, you know, served, you know, Mr. Grogan Myers has served our city well in that capacity, and, and, and Mr. Stinson prior to him. The, the thing is, is, is that will continue to be one of the hats that Mr. Grogan Myers will wear, and, and the ordinance contemplates that. But a large part of the transformation of, of Mr. Grogan Myers' position this year has been to focus him on these issues. And this is a, a natural next step, especially when the, when the community calls out for needing this kind of attention, and when our aging housing stock calls out for needing this kind of attention. So that we're not trying to restore a lost and dilapidated housing stock, but really that we're trying to bolster an aging stock, houses that mostly have good bones, and that, and we want to preserve as many of them as we can, so that they can continue to be the vibrant homes that they've been. And I've kind of just streamed my way to this. So, again, Mr. Sims, what was your original question?
I think you answered it.
My original question was relating to council oversight, and we will...
Oh, council oversight, yes.
And you will answer that for us.
Yes, yes. So, yes. I, I imagine this is going to, to fall into the, into our building committee, and I think we'll continue to do so. But I think that is also something that we can continue to, there may be occasions where certain aspects could and have go to the committee of the whole.
And civic affairs.
Or to civic affairs. Yeah, or...
Then that will defeat the focus and the intentionality, so I certainly wouldn't.
No, okay, okay. I see what you're saying.
Yes.
But yes. Yes. Now, I anticipate, especially because some of these things, like the rental registration ordinance, that's something that we're presently working on in the building committee, and that would be something that would be going to the housing department now, instead of the building department. So, it, it, it seems to me that it makes sense that, that both of those department-level matters would continue with the building department, or rather, with the building committee, so long as building committee remains the committee, that there aren't, that we don't reorganize what the committee structure looks like.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think this is a fantastic idea, you know, for many reasons. But, so 20 years ago, a city that was made up almost entirely of single-family homes didn't need a housing department, because there, you, people would come and buy houses and live there for a while, and sell them for more money, and everybody would be happy. But I think the foreclosure crisis and the market crash of the mid-2000s really changed a lot of the dynamics in terms of the way small cities are handled, and the number of foreclosures that went through the city, and the number of the houses that were sold for way less than market value, I think, have contributed to a number of problems that we have in the city. And I think this is really going to be uniquely positioned to fix it. I, we all recall that the first piece of legislation that we passed under the new administration was the property, we, we updated the property registration section of the code, so that if someone had a house in foreclosure, and they were the plaintiff, that the building department could cite them and help them, help them understand that they had to now fix it up, rather than just, just let it sit. In fact, this happened to a house in my neighborhood. It's been, it's been vacant for about four years, and about six months ago, the, the party that has it in foreclosure redid all the windows and fixed it up to get it ready to have people look at it. I don't know what it's going to sell for, but it's a great little house. But, but unfortunately, a city like us has to incur costs and be a lot more aggressive in terms of making sure that, that these things are taken care of. Mr. Grogan Myers, I think yourself, you're selling yourself a little short. You meet, you've been meeting monthly, I think, with the county group to discuss how other cities are dealing with these issues, and to see what they're doing. So, you've really had a, you've really had a bird's-eye view, or a shotgun view of what cities are doing. So you're not coming to this without any background or information. You really have been setting yourself up, and you know all these people in the county. So, I think it's great that, that you're involved in this, and I think it's great that you're going to be running this new department, not only pushing through that legislation that we had at the beginning of the year, but making sure that we're doing more aggressive things. We've all been saying for years, let's do something. And I think, if people could keep their eye on that, the fact that whether, whether what we're, whether the changes that are being made are achieving results right away or not, whether they're perfect or not, it's that, it's that we're doing what we can to move these problems along and to try to fix them. And I, and I applaud the mayor for not just sitting back, but for realizing we have to do it. Sometimes, sometimes the airplane will fly, and sometimes it'll just sink to the ground and hit the wall. But I, I'm, I have no, I have no worries that this program is, I have every confidence that this is going to do really well. I think we have a great department director. I couldn't be more happy about this. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Mr. Eardle?
Yes, I think this is very exciting also. So much of what we do as a council is housekeeping, you know, and this is something that is going to be extremely beneficial for this city. Housing stock is crucial to the, the ongoing success of a, of a community. So, this is fantastic. This is really exciting. This is one of the better things I've seen done in a long time. And hopefully, it's the first step. So, with that said, I would like to get from you, if you're the appropriate person, and if it's possible, I, my understanding is there's 800-some rentals in this city?
800?
Yeah. Is it possible to see, over time, how that number grew? I'd be real curious to know how many there were 20 years ago, for example?
I wish I could.
Just, just so I, just so I know how scared I should be.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Eardle. All right. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Grogan Myers? Any further comment on this proposed legislation? Mrs. Cameron?
I would like to remind Mr. Weisman that we kind of had set a plan date somewhere around the new year to present our findings and our plans for the, to update the code, the ordinance.
Which ordinance would that be?
The ordinance where we had the meetings where we had to put the landlord situation on the back end.
Yes.
I want you to forget that.
Oh, no, I don't think Mr. Weisman has, if I may jump in here.
I am reminded.
And, and part, and, and also, part of the, part of this process... And, and part, and, and also part of the, part of this process is, as we, as we further explore rationally relating the fee for rental inspections to the service provided, you know, fully fleshing out how this department will function, and, and what it will cost to operate it, will directly factor into what the fee ultimately will be.
Right. And then I also wanted to, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I also wanted to remind folks on council about the BZA rules and regs and everything that we had paid for already to be done, under a different administration.
Yes.
And I was wondering if you had any information about us receiving a report from that entity.
Well, not so much from that entity, as much as when it comes to reviewing our zoning, I can tell you that Mr. Grogan Myers and Ms. Drucker have begun the preliminary work of reviewing the zoning in this city for update. They're working together on that, they've also recently attended a seminar on that, and have begun reporting back to me about some preliminary ideas for some changes. This is something I believe, at least at this juncture, that we can do in-house, or do a significant portion of in-house.
I just would like to know what happened to money that we spent.
Well, I have a gusset that has a bunch of information in it from the previous administration with respect to the zoning proposals that ultimately were shelved, in fact, that is literally on a shelf in my office, thus shelved.
Okay. I said okay.
Okay. Mr. Weisman.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we, now, I, screen went blank, that we adopt ordinance 2018-70, enacting codified ordinance chapter 243 entitled Department of Housing and Community Development is establishing the positions of Director of Housing and Community Development and Housing Inspector on emergency.
Okay, very good, we have a motion, as read by Mr. Weisman, made on emergency, and then seconded by Mr. Sims, is there any further, is there any discussion on this motion? There's no further discussion on this matter, we will, Mrs. Thomas, we call a vote first on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Spardie?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Okay, very good. This ordinance passes, and we will have a housing department and a new housing director, so, very well done, everyone.
I just like how you're getting the most of your money for using Mr. Grogan Myers.
Yes, yes. Next is item E, ordinance 2018-71, calling on Congress to amend the United States Constitution to establish that corporations are not people, and money is not speech, this is on first reading, this is introduced by Councilwoman Pam Cameron. Councilwoman Cameron, will you take the floor and offer some remarks?
Well, this ordinance was brought to my attention by a citizen who has been very diligent in terms of efforts to make all of our citizenry aware that the government, that our federal government still has this situation. I don't, I, my words aren't coming to me, pardon me, but at any rate, he wanted to, he wanted to enlist the support of council to address this matter, so that we can join with the national movement to limit or complain, as best I can say, that we-
I can provide some additional context for council, if that would be helpful.
Yes. My words are not coming to me.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Cameron, Mr. McConville.
So this originated with Scott Walker, a resident, who approached the city with the hope that a measure could be placed on the ballot in which residents would vote on enacting this ordinance. However, under our charter, items that are proposed for initiative petition do not automatically go to the ballot, they come to council first, and if council simply passes the proposed ordinance, then there's no need to go to the ballot. So the charter was designed to eliminate unnecessary ballot measures. As a consequence of that, Mr. Walker pivoted to saying, well, why doesn't council just consider this ordinance? And the ordinance is an ordinance that is in opposition to a United States Supreme Court decision known as Citizens United, in which the United States Supreme Court ruled that corporations have the right, under the First Amendment, to donate or, or to contribute funds to campaigns. There's been a lot of backlash to that decision, and so what this ordinance would do is it would require the city to hold an annual hearing called Democracy Day, in which the impact on the city of political influence by corporate entities would be discussed. I know in other municipalities, they invite speakers to, to educate and speak on the topic, and that following each hearing, the clerk of council would send correspondence as to the nature of the hearing to leaders in the Ohio House and Senate, and to United States Congressional delegates, asking them to consider repealing or, or sponsoring the repeal of Citizens United by constitutional amendment. So that, that's the, long and the short of it, it's really mostly symbolic in nature, but Mr. Walker was the sort of prime mover on this.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. McConville, and thank you, Mrs. Cameron, I appreciate that you have assisted Mr. Walker as well in, in, in his desire to, to advance this cause, even in light of the peculiarities of our charter with respect to ballot initiatives, so, actually, that would also go to you as well, Mr. McConville, thank you for working with this citizen with regard to this cause that I know is near and dear to him and to many people in the community. Mr. Sims.
Thank you. I don't agree with the decision that the, that the Supreme, that the Supreme Court made, but my question is, I have two questions. The first question is, we're calling on a, an amendment to the Constitution, is it possible for this to be accomplished by calling on Congress to redress this question?
Yeah, and that's what's, that's the sub-paragraph B requires, after the public hearing portion, that letters be sent to the United States Congressional Representatives in the state of Ohio and to the senators.
Okay, so I guess my question is, couldn't Congress just say that corporations are not people? Why does it have to be a constitutional amendment?
I think because of the Citizens United decision being a Supreme Court decision, so it would require a constitutional amendment as a, absent a reversal by the court itself.
All right, well, I would like that question examined, because I'm not sure that that's absolutely the case, because everything that is done by the Supreme Court doesn't necessarily require a constitutional amendment in order to change it. And then the only other observation I have, and I know we're not voting on this tonight, so the only other observation that I have is, I think that in section B, section 1B, that we shouldn't, I mean, there's, it's not that type of urgency that this has to be sent to anyone in one week, so I would prefer to see 30 days.
B1.
B1.
Or, I'm sorry, just B.
Oh, oh, I see.
Section 1.
Yes, within, within one week following the biennial, okay.
So, Mr. Sims, if I'm hearing you correctly, you say we need to find out whether or not-
Congress in and of itself could make this change.
Okay.
And the reason that I'm asking that question is, I would like for the ordinance to be pushing Congress, because it's more likely that Congress will act on this than 50 states, or three-quarters of 50 states, if this is ever going to happen.
Well, under the, after election day, I think it might be possible, that it could be a congressional action.
Well, I mean, that's my question, I don't know if it's possible or not, but if it is, we should be urging Congress-
Right.
-to make this happen.
Okay, that's a great question.
Yeah, I suppose that's something that could, we, we can examine further, it, my, my recollection, I know, I understand there are different ways of amending the US Constitution, I do recall specifically that ratification by state legislatures is the way it's generally done, a constitutional convention is another way of doing it, I don't believe that solely an act of Congress is enough, I think, under, you know, for purposes of federalism and under the Constitution, ratification by state legislatures is required in the absence of a constitutional convention, and there has been no constitutional convention called since the initial one in the 1780s, but I would have to go back and check to be sure.
I think you have a more specific question, and it, and it, I mean, you know, this is Marbury versus Madison, isn't it? There's a very famous case called Marbury versus Madison, every first year law student has nightmares about it, but basically, the, the court ruled in that case that the court has the final say on what the law is. At, you know, we have three branches of government, the question was, who has the final say? Is it the president and the executive, is it the Congress, or is it the courts? And the courts ruled that the courts are the final say, and that, that was a bedrock decision that has not been disturbed since really the inception of our constitutional democracy. So I think the way, the reason this approach is being taken is that once the court has ruled that corporations have free speech rights under the First Amendment, and can thereby contribute to political campaigns, any sort of law that Congress passed that would be in opposition to that presumably would be deemed to be unconstitutional by the Supreme Court, and so-
So the only way then would be to amend it?
Would be to amend the Constitution, that would be the way around it.
Oh, my God.
So I think that, that's the genesis of the approach. Certainly, with the change in Congress, there, you know, might be some, some discussion about Citizens United, there are still a lot of groups that are, you know, campaigning or, or contributing money because, or upset about that decision, but I, I think the law of the land was established in Citizens United, that corporations have free speech rights under the First Amendment.
Okay, I know Mr. Rock's been waiting, Mr. Rock?
Yes, and I don't agree with Citizens United either, in fact, I totally disagree with it, but I don't know if we're going about this the right way. We have in the past made motions to call on Congress for, for other things, but we didn't make, we didn't pass ordinances in doing so, what I'm afraid of is passing this ordinance, it's going to live with the city until it, it doesn't expire, until we remove the ordinance, and where I'm discomfort, uncomfortable with that is, you know, item A here, talking about Democracy Day, I think it's a wonderful idea, it's something that we should have, but beginning in 2019, this is going to be an every-other-year event, in which the politics of the city may change, and now we're held to an ordinance to hold something that might not even be relevant down the road, so unless there's a sunset provision in this, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. It's going to be very challenging, though, to do a constitutional amendment, there's been 11,700 proposals to Congress for constitutional amendments, and only 27 times did it pass, and the 27th Amendment took 202 years to, to enact by the, by the states. So it's an uphill battle, and I'm glad we're going to be pioneering this, but I just don't think, I don't think we're capable in this city, I think there's other ways to do it, but to actually put an ordinance in the city that we have to abide by, that lives with the city until we sunset it, I, I don't think we're going about it the right way.
There's, there's no question that the ordinance is mainly symbolic in nature, I, I don't think there's any dispute about that.
Yeah, but this ordinance will obligate the city to hold this day every two years-
Yes.
It will.
And write a report-
Yes, it will.
Until the Constitution is changed, or until this republic doesn't exist anymore.
As it's currently written, that is correct.
So, all of those things, I agree with Councilman Rock 100%, I think all of that should be taken into consideration with respect to exactly what action we take, I think we need to take an action, and any action is symbolic, so we need to take a symbolic action that's going to be, you know, the best that we can do without doing things that we-
Creating a formal effort connected to a symbolic gesture.
Well, yeah, if, if, if I could ask the law director something, if, because I didn't, I have not in a while reviewed the section of the charter with respect to, to ballot initiative, if this council were to vote down 2018-71, then that actually would be a step towards allowing the supporters of this proposal, such as Mr. Walker, to put it on the ballot, which originally was what they wanted to do in the first place.
That, that is correct. However, I think once Mr. Walker became aware of the initiative provisions in our charter, and maybe this is unfair, I, one of two things I think transpired, either he became disinterested in obtaining the signatures necessary to present it to you for passage through that process, or he couldn't obtain the procedures, but as things stand right now, there is no initiative petition relating to this ordinance that's been circulated and that contains the signatures, so we're not in an initiative setting. Now, you, you could communicate to him that you're inclined to vote it down, and he would probably go out and get the signatures and have it placed on the ballot.
That's fine.
That, that would be one, I think, plausible outcome of that news to him, you could place it on the table, and then he could, he could go ahead and, you know, we, we, as a, I, I have, you know, previously prepared all of the ballot language for him, so he's got the ballot language, he's got the petition, he's got everything he would need to initiate that process, so, up to you.
I, I would be, go ahead, Mr. Weisman.
So I'd like to apologize for the non-lawyers in the room having to sit through this discussion, which would have fascinated me 20 years ago in, in law school, so, so here, so here's, this is, I found this, two sources online now, and it's, I'm no constitutional scholar, but a, oh, heck, a proposed amendment must be passed by two-thirds of both Houses of Congress, which means two-thirds of the Senate and the House have to agree on something, in terms of whether it's likely or not, and then ratified by three-fourths of the states. So I believe that what this is aimed to do is to force Congress's hand, if all the states send Congress this letter and say, we all want this, then- If all the states send Congress this letter and say, "We all want this," then Congress may get the idea. Of course, it's symbolic, it may take years, right? Who knows how things go, but that's just sort of a background about a constitutional amendment. I have, I have, I have no problem with this in its sort of, in its idea stage. I'm, I'm not sure I want to obligate us to have this meeting every two years for two days in February. I'm, I'm more than willing to do it once, and two years later, we could say, "Hey, we did it two years ago, we still feel the same way." But also in Section 1, 220, 201B, which is on the first page, it says, "Within one week after the meeting, we'll send a letter to the House, the Senate, right, our congressional representative. The letter shall," this is what I'm reading now, quote, "The letter shall include a brief summary of the public hearing, and will state that council enacted an ordinance called for, calling for an amendment to the Constitution." So to pass something now, to say, "In February, we're going to pass, we're going to have a meeting in this letter that says we enacted this section when we haven't really decided to enact it," I think it's a little sort of passively, it's sort of forcing us to do it. I would vote for this, but I think I would be comfortable removing that and sort of let that, let that arise at the meeting if we're going to actually enact something. I'm not comfortable passing an ordinance now that says, "We're going to enact it after we have this public hearing." More than happy to have the public hearing once, and to then enact it if we need to. But those would be, those would be my changes. Understanding that we're a very small city in a very big nation, and this would do nothing more than be like throwing grains of sand at an elephant in an effort to get it to stop its course, but I'm more than willing to pick up my handful of sand and do what I can. Thank you.
Mr. McConville?
Yes. Do you have a question for the Law Director? Okay.
What I wanted to know, is there a way that we could create an ordinance that was symbolic in nature, that did not require any action on the city's part? Would that suffice in terms of Citizens United's request for support?
Well, two parts to that question. One is, yes, you can create something that is symbolic in nature, that doesn't require any action. And two, whether that suffices is really up to council. I mean, I was asked to prepare something that had been presented to me by Mr. Walker. This is the form that, that he asked this legislation to take. I believe that's because other communities have adopted this format. So I don't have any pride in authorship about this or in the format. You guys tell me what you want, and I'll put it together.
Okay. Well, then...
Furthermore, I don't know if that satisfies this gentleman's intent, because if we pass something symbolic in nature, while I'm for that, and I will go to Washington and march with him, that, that's fine, but I don't know if that's going to satisfy his needs because if we don't pass an ordinance and this ends up on the ballot, that's great if that happens. That's, that's how our Charter's set up, and that's how democracy works.
Exactly.
But I think, and I fully support doing something symbolic in nature, I'm just not sure it's going to satisfy this gentleman's pluses.
Well, I'm really more concerned about it satisfying our issue than Mr. Walker individually, but what I, what I'm thinking is that it satisfies what my commitment was to him...
Those would be my changes.
...in terms of bringing this through council and having council hear the issues and add the issues. And, and I think that if we can present something that's symbolic, that states that we too agree that corporations are not people, and that they should not have the right to use their speech and put their money where their mouths are, I think that would suffice from what we can do as a city without wrapping everyone up into a process every two years. And I think that really is all that we really can do. So, Mr. McConville, when we leave here, I think we'll put our heads together and come up with a gesture that meets the, that goes, speaks to the issue itself, symbolic in nature, acknowledging that we'll all have to throw a handful of sand at an elephant and let it go after that. Okay?
Whatever you, this is just the first reading, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Right. And, you know, I just, the, I appreciate the, the suggestions and foresight by members of the council about requiring, going forward every two years, a Democracy Day, which, you know, I would not want to see us get into the habit of passing laws that we would eventually feel as if there is no point in continuing to try to enforce. I mean, as the, as your mayor, I try to faithfully execute the laws that are on the books, and I could see a mayor twenty years from now not yet having a, a resolution to Citizens United, you know, being called out and asked, you know, "When's your Democracy Day going to be? Have you and council picked a date yet in February?" And like, "Oh, I guess that's one more thing I have to go do now." And, and the thing is, is I'd be happy to do a Democracy Day after we, we pass this or a joint resolution. Do we want to bind future city governments to decades of this potentially? That, that's, that's a good question. And, and luckily, this being the first reading, we don't have to answer that today.
Okay.
But, you know, it may be that Mr. Walker would hope that we would do that, or that there are residents that would hope that we would do that, and since this is a first reading, perhaps we will hear from someone.
Okay.
And, you know, there are some things, some matters that maybe, maybe do merit a review at least every two years. There have been other, perhaps weightier constitutional issues in the history of the, of this country where only taking them up every two years would seem like a pittance. But, but I'll leave it at that. This is first reading. Does anybody else have anything else they want to add at this juncture?
Just, I have to excuse myself.
Okay.
I've got someplace I should have been two minutes ago.
Understood.
But that's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle.
So am I going to meet, am I going to miss an executive session?
Most, yes.
All right. Well, then I'll touch base with you folks later.
Yes, please feel free.
And I'm going to report as the recreation.
Okay, okay, very good. Now, I'll be happy to talk with you later about executive session. I'm sure anybody else here will too.
All right.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Okay, which, next item on the agenda is a motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and real estate matters. We do have legal and real estate matters to discuss. I don't know if there are any personnel matters to discuss at this juncture. Okay, well, then it's just legal and real estate matters. So I would ask for a motion to hold an executive session immediately following the regular portion of this meeting for the purpose of discussing legal and real estate matters. Is there a motion?
Sound move.
Motion by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. A second by Mrs. Cameron. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
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 Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, aye.
Thank you. Next, we have Director's Reports. Finance.
I've got, let your microphone on. I've got several items for you, some of which you guys will actually have already have sitting in front of you. Thank you, Kelly, our Clerk of Council, for getting those packets to you. We are having all of our employees refill out employee packets. Part of that is due to just all the updates we've been doing in Finance. This is regarding personnel files, just to make sure we have all that documentation. But more importantly, when it comes to a couple of those documents in particular, the basic employee information, the W4, the IT4, and the payroll direct deposit authorization, we are going, we rely upon those updated forms when we start entering employees into the new payroll system. We just got up online with that software today, and we are beginning the process of moving in that direction to have that up and running as soon as possible, with the target being that we will switch to that effective in the first of the year. There's also in there a couple other items that are kind of compliance regulatory-wise. Anybody has any questions, please let me know. But the goal would be to get that basic employee information, the W4, IT4, and direct deposit into us hopefully by Friday at the latest. Health Insurance Committee, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon where we'll make a recommendation as required by the various union agreements to the mayor, and the mayor then will make a recommendation to council. The goal would be to have that recommendation in front of council at the first meeting in December, so that we can get approval at that meeting, so we can move forward with open enrollment before the end of December. Right now, it looks like our current plan as a renewal was going to be up, but that it's been negotiated down, and we'll have a little bit more detail when we meet with our broker tomorrow. The financial packets, if there's any other reports you guys would like to see, let me know, and we can amend those going forward. One of the other items you guys have in front of you, for anybody who wasn't at the Finance Committee meeting, wow, it was a week and a half ago, two weeks ago at this point, where we started talking about the budget, you've got a copy of the documentation that was handed out at that meeting. Do you have our capital items now put together? I am finalizing a few revisions that we had to and putting it into a format that was more consolidated as requested by the committee, so that that'll be ready in time for the two committee meetings we've got, we've got scheduled before the next two council meetings to discuss it, and so that we'll have the appropriations ordinance on the agenda starting with the first meeting in December. If there are any specific questions about any of that, I'll happy entertain it. If anybody has questions about any of the employee forms, you can contact Denise in Finance, she does a lot of her payroll, or you can talk to me, and we can go through those individually.
What's Denise's extension?
Her extension is 217. And if you need to get hold of her by email, it's D, and then Ballint, your last name, B-A-L-I-N-T, at universityheights.com.
I have nothing else to answer these questions.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Goff? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Next report, Law. Mr. McConville?
Counsel, I have an update for you on the small cell regulations issue. The federal government had, specifically the Federal Communications Commission, has gone ahead and promulgated regulations for the regulation of 5G wireless communications or small cell facilities, and those regulations will preempt both state and local law. So the small cell ordinance that we passed earlier this year as a compromise, that was modeled after House Bill, I think it was 478, which, as you may recall, was negotiated between the telecommunications industry on the one hand and local governments on the other, has now been preempted. So to the extent that it is inconsistent with the regulations, we will need to modify it. The regulations are one hundred and fifteen pages in length, so we're sort of, in, in particular Walter Haverfield, our litigation counsel's making their way through those litigations to spot differences between the federal regulations and our ordinances passed, and we'll likely be having a revised small cell ordinance back to you for your consideration sometime in January. In addition, I wanted to let you know that Lynda Johnson has submitted her resignation as Chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals. She was not able to attend our latest meeting, and at that meeting, the board voted to have me act as Chair without a vote for the remainder of the year, so that I'm helping them to run the meetings, but not voting. I do not have the right to vote, but wanted to let you know that there will be a board seat that presumably the mayor will be filling by the end of the year. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. And, and yes, I will be taking applications for the Board of Zoning Appeals vacancy. Next, Public Safety. Police. Mr., rather, Chief Rogers could not be here this evening. Do have a report from him. First item is with regard to Frontline Electronic Parking Permission Program. In conjunction with our regional dispatch, Heights Hill Crest Communication Center, we will be assessing an electronic parking permission program called Frontline with the potential for implementation in January 2019. He said the following part was optional, because this could get long, but I feel like this is important, and you may want to hear it. To further illustrate the burdensome, burdensomeness of the current manual parking permission process, Heights Hill Crest Communication Center is currently on track for approximately 21,000 combined parking permission calls for the, a year for the five cities combined. Of the 21,000 parking permission calls, approximately 2,300 would be for University Heights Police Department parking permission. Heights Hill Crest Communication Center is on track for approximately 186,000 total calls for the year, and 16,500 of those are for University Heights. Frontline will allow the agency, the dispatch center, and the public to streamline the parking permission process through a web-based platform that will be accessed by the residents and the community for parking permission requests. Parking permission requests can still be called into Heights Hill Crest Communication Center once Frontline is implemented. Frontline will allow the department to more effectively and efficiently monitor the city use of overnight street parking permissions. It will allow the department to set up specific permission parameters to meet the needs of the city, and the program will deny excessive and inappropriate parking permission requests in real time online. So basically, it's, in short, there are instances, and this has interestingly was brought up earlier in the meeting, where occasionally residents will call in asking for permission to leave a car parked on the street overnight. There are occasions where that is permitted. Apparently, apparently 2,300 of those calls made to regional dispatch have been just from this city alone, which is breathtaking in a way, that there are 2,300 separate requests for leaving your car parked on the street in University Heights over the course of a year, but perhaps that's right. I mean, apparently, it's right because, you know, that's how many calls they got. So this is a way of, of handling this electronically, this, this very basic function with some basic guidelines, which then frees up our dispatchers to take more serious calls. Not that this isn't important, but obviously, we even heard from residents just today about people who park overnight in the city and whether they're allowed to do that on certain occasions. And the thing is, is these things are reviewed, so this is a way of doing that.
Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
That is exactly the question that Ms. Stor was asking me before the meeting started.
Right.
So if she could be in receipt of that information, I think she would appreciate it. She was asking about what the criteria are for denying a request.
Right. Yeah, I don't have those right here, and I'm sure Chief Rogers could better supply those, but, and that's not to say that 2,300 requests resulted in 2,300 permission granted responses, but, but there are requests, and, I mean, a lot of them I know just from Sillsby Road alone, where we resurfaced Sillsby. There were people who, in order to, would park on the street, on the side streets for days on end because they couldn't get in and out of the driveways, and of course, we accommodated that. All right. Next item is the hiring update. There's one candidate awaiting swearing in, one candidate finishing post-conditional offer process. At this rate, once orientation and training dates are coordinated, we hope to have two candidates sworn in within a month. Background checks for other candidates are ongoing, as four positions total need to be filled. And then finally, I'm sure everybody's been waiting for this, the holiday lighting decorations. The Sign Shop will be putting up the snowflake holiday decorations in the city this week. There are a total of 21 utility pole locations where the snowflakes can be placed on Cedar and in surrounding business districts. I know sometimes those look a little spotty, but that's really based upon FirstEnergy giving permission to use certain poles and not others, so we can't place a snowflake where the utility company won't let us place one, so. We do have those snowflakes, those will be going out, and seasons greetings. And that would be the conclusion of our police report. Fire, Chief Furca. Fire, Chief Perka.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Just want to report, over the course of the year, I've been working with Chief Perk and John Carroll on some communication deficiencies we have across the campus. Currently at the point where we're going to have a joint meeting in December, Fire Department, Police, Campus Police, and we've also been in contact with our Joint Dispatch at Heights Hill Crest Communications Center. Do some testing over there and get amplifiers and antennas installed to be able to rectify some of the dead spots across the campus. Update on hiring and promotionals for the Fire Department. We issued four conditional offers this morning, so pending one more final step with them, they should be ready to start sometime next month. Two weeks ago, we promoted three firefighters to the rank of Lieutenant and two lieutenants to the rank of Captain. And now we'll now propose to get our fire department should be open at the first of the year as well. I'd like to thank Patrick and Jim for working with us to decide where everyone was going to go with the limited space. And looking forward to getting that open at the first of the year. Counsel should be aware that probably in the next meeting, I'll ask for you to approve accepting of three iPads from a state grant. We applied for it a while back in the beginning of the year. I had kind of forgotten about it and we just notified yesterday that we were awarded one iPad. Final reminder that Thursday, November twenty-ninth, will be the last CPR class for this year at the library and residents can sign up on the city webpage. Still having ongoing discussion of the analysis of purchasing of our ladder truck, meeting with committee, trying to prepare that for the course of the year. And just a final note about fire safety, unattended cooking fires are the number one fire hazard in the country right now and Thanksgiving is the peak day for that. So just a reminder to watch cooking on Thanksgiving and if you're using deep fryers, particularly to deep fry turkeys, that they definitely need to be outdoors, on a surface of concrete or stone and without any flammable material.
Do not drop a frozen turkey into the hot grease.
Right.
Yes. No, I've never personally done it, but I've heard. Does anybody have any questions here for the chief? Very good. Thank you, Chief Perka. Oh, I may add, with respect to the lieutenants and captains who were promoted, we did a provisional swearing in of them, but we are looking to do a ceremonial swearing in of them in the month of December, probably at the last city council meeting of the year so that their family members and so on can be here for that. So just to let you know, we will probably for that meeting, because we will also have a Finance Committee meeting preceding that meeting, hold the reception at seven and then start our actual business at seven thirty. So, all right. Very good. Next would be Service. Mr. Pecorni is on vacation. I basically took his report and consolidated it into mine. Basically, they're out there gathering the leaves. Overtime was approved. Got a lot of leaf work done on Saturday, but not all of it. A lot of streets were hit today, a bunch more tomorrow. It's an ongoing process and it's a wonderful service that we offer our community and if everyone could just be patient, we will get to everybody provided the snow doesn't get to us first. So if there are any questions about that, happy to talk about that. I feel like I fielded calls about that all day long, every day for the last month.
I do have a quick question.
Sure, okay, Mr. Sims.
Is the process delayed this year for some reason?
No, the leaves just didn't come down for the longest time.
Okay, so now they're down.
And then they all came down at once.
Okay, because on my street, they have been down and raped for almost at least two weeks and there hasn't been a pickup.
Okay, well.
I mean.
I know which street you're on, so I will take that up tomorrow.
Yeah, just take, could you take a look at that?
Well, with the service program, because this is before he's out this week. Yes, I will do that. And, you know, some of it's also, when they pass through, if a car happens to be parked in front of your tree lawn, they will skip the tree lawn because they don't have easy access then to the leaves. I'm not saying that's what happened on your street or at your house in particular, but there are occasionally factors that weigh in. And I can tell you that, I live on Washington Boulevard and finally got my leaves down to the tree lawn on Saturday where they wait, you know, but, you know, that's, we will get to everyone.
Thank you.
Very good.
And if I'm mistaken, just tell me when they were picked up.
Well, I'm not going to tell you that there are no leaves there when you can see the leaves, Mr. Sims.
Maybe more came, I mean, I don't know, but I'm just, I'm just saying. I don't want to make any statements that are untrue.
No, 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 I appreciate that.
Did you rape them, Mr. Sims?
I provided that they were raped. Yes.
So you don't know.
As did I. Okay. Anyway, all right, so that brings us to the Building Commissioner, so, Mr. McReynolds. Thank you.
Anything? Happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays.
Thanksgiving.
Let me begin by stating that this is a period of significant positive change in the building department. I began my code enforcement career twenty-five years ago this past July at Cleveland Heights, which had and still has to this day a separate housing and building department, as does Shaker Heights, more of this and this type of people. And when I was first acquainted with this program, I became acquainted with all types of inspections, there was complaint inspection, the rental control, and exterior maintenance, all of which I handled under the housing department. And I had occasion to even ask myself, why would residents in the right moment enact legislation which would enable us to force them to do this, to tell people they have to do these, give them a time limit, and if they don't do it, send them to a job. And I thought about that, I asked questions, and the reason came back to preserve and maintain property values. The folks who built these homes have long done, but for them, it was a major investment. For many of them, it was the most important investment in their lives and it was something to pass down to their children and their grandchildren and to provide for the future. So they have great interest in preserving it. And I understand that. I found out from many studies and classes that well-preserved, attractive, well-maintained properties make the city a desirable place to live. And not only that, but they add to a physical and psychological well-being for the residents. Now, when you have a combined department, sometimes it's the result of economic situations. If state aid that was coming to the cities is suddenly withdrawn, you find yourself in a position of allowing people to retire and not fill in those positions after they're withdrawn and making do with what you have left. And so as a result of that and other factors, we have become a reactive department. We receive complaints, we react to them and send them away. Now we're going to become a proactive department. And so we can get ahead of this. Now, I'm talking strictly about housing side at this point, but I think it's important to look at the reasons for doing this and how this is going to work in the future. I have some expertise to lead and so my vision is to kind of guide us in this, help us in stages. And for the past few months, we've been leading up to this point where we've now been able to rearrange the building that I made. Fire prevention, with the gracious approval of the chief and his utmost cooperation is appreciated, has relocated to the annex and that enables us to utilize the entire second floor for our housing. That will also, up to Patrick, of course, that we're still working that out, there's lots of details that we'll do. We may even have the opportunity to have a separate room up there for conferences. So, and the intention is not to be heavy-handed, but to allow a dialogue so that if a homeowner or landlord wants to come in and discuss the situation calmly, reasonably, try to work something out. But all the mechanisms, excuse me, all the mechanisms are now in place to accomplish this. We have ordinances on the books. We have systems in place to issue notices and to follow up on these notices. Now lately, we hired three people to be willing to hire. These people will have the, we were very lucky to get people that are overqualified for these positions. First one we hired was an administrative clerk. She got her feet on the ground because she will have to learn how to handle this paperwork that we intend to generate and to keep the systems going that we already have in place. Right now, she's working on retrieving the money from the rentals that we haven't collected, from the moratorium on the rental collection. So now we're looking forward, we have three inspectors who can use totally in the rental and housing programs. They can become interchangeable and cross-trained so that we'll never be without a rental inspector, we'll never be without a front of sale inspector. Now, granted, I can do these jobs as well, but it's good to have these people cross-trained so that they can go to different positions. People I've been able to hire has been two inspectors, each have certifications, one of which supplies a certification I didn't have and had to hire out, so now we have that in-house. So now we are completely certified, permanent with those. That's a big accomplishment. Not only that, but on the housing side, we can inspire these inspectors to become more certified. And the guys that I've just hired will be able to swing back and forth between housing and building. They were hired that way. They understand that, but they have experience. Two gentlemen I hired, one has over thirteen years' experience and the other has six months. But six months of experience is something. And he's a young enthusiastic guy, he seemed here to be here, and I think they're both going to make wonderful additions to the department. So the housing is taking shape and we're looking forward to, Patrick and I are working together to try to set a system up that will inaugurate next year to kind of take care of everything in the past that's been open-ended, that hasn't been followed up on, it's been kind of languishing, kind of previous way we give them. So that's, so I wanted to let you know, we hired two inspectors, we retired one administrative assistant, our second inspector just began to bay, that's the young and enthusiastic one, and hopefully you'll get a chance to meet him. His name is Jason Monaco. In addition to that, we hired Rob Brown, who's a permanent inspector, and Teddy Curtis, who is working in administrative. Okay? The only other news of note is that the Green Road Liquor Store has opened up, right next door to the Bar and Wine Liquor Store.
They do different things.
Yes, they complement each other's things. So, Mr. Sims.
No, Mr. McReynolds, that was wonderful. That really, I think, you know, brought home, you know, especially from the building side, you know, the, but really for both, you know, why we're doing this and the enhancements that come with it and, you know, how we're all working together to improve, you know, service to our city, to our residents, to our businesses and the, you know, your confidence in the model and the course that we're taking. That's outstanding. Thank you.
Very significantly marked of an upper-level community. And attracting residents to this community that are of good character and are willing to keep the standards high is only going to make it that much, a better place to live for all of us. And Mrs. Dour was here earlier, Sherry Dour, who I've been in contact with frequently. And I appreciate her concern. She is talking about a time that she remembers when she was growing up, sixty-two years ago, whenever the neighborhood, that I would like to see us maintained. Even though we have a lot of rentals, I don't think it's unmanaged. And I think that there are some bad neighborhoods and one of the problems that we can have is getting these people to be accountable. So we have strengthened the code program. We have strengthened our application so that even if it's an out-of-town landlord, we're going to have a local person here that we can talk to and put a handle on and some court we have to. One of the biggest problems is that we have somebody in Oregon and you take that person to shake the highest court and say, you expect this to send a day without to Oregon? We can't do that. So the case languishes. And what we end up is with a paper tiger, how do we enforce it if we can't show that we are serious about it? So these little steps put together are strengthening the department and bringing us up to, I think, the highest levels that we can possibly attain. I felt that when I was at Cleveland Heights, we had the most intense inspection services in the country because I met with inspectors of Madison Council and we had seminars and I compared our inspection techniques with those in Oregon, New York, Pennsylvania, Idaho. And we were right up there because of our attention to code. Ohio itself is leading the country in code enforcement. And so I can tell you, so very positive about this and I think if you're a resident of the city, you're going to see benefits. It won't happen again, it will happen.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McReynolds? Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Next report is our City Engineer, Mr. Chuni. You just follow that, sir. You got this.
Thank you, Mayor. Most construction projects are, are winding up. Our whole program is done at this point at the Stripe Cedar Taylor, they're probably going to have the crosswalks lined up with the new buffels that wasn't completed today. Green Road is done as far as the new crosswalks go. The only last item to do is the pet signals, there are new pet signals that have to be put up, the foundations are there. Soon as they come in, we have to hold them down, put that, and we'll be done with that. But there's some barrels there left, but all lanes of traffic are open, which is good because it's kind of a problem for Heinz that for a while with that one lane and get a lot of complaints. The Groveland Waterline Project, everybody's hooked up to the main line in the street now, they are repairing the street. They only did four hundred feet of the trench today, they have another thousand feet to go. I was hoping to be done by Wednesday, it's going to be close. If not, they're going to have to come back next week to do, if they get another four hundred, five hundred feet, they're going to have one feet left to go, which is probably right. They are working on bringing Green Road down to Milton, so they'll do that and that will get completed. As the mayor indicated, we're opening bids a week from today for the chairlift for the City Hall and hopefully we'll be some of the bids on that. End of report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Mr. Wiseman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chuni, I've been hearing a lot from the residents on Groveland Road. Specifically, they're concerned if the street doesn't get paved before the winter hits.
We are repairing the trench with concrete all the way to the top. The trench is where we dug to put the new water.
Right.
We will not be paving curb to curb this too late. The asphalt plants will be closing in a week. It's going to have to be done next year.
But they'll have cement in the trench and then the, whatever the previous asphalt, the regular asphalt is there, what's there now will stay there.
What's there now will stay there.
They'll have at least a finished road.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Until the spring, okay. And so I know this took a long time, it took longer because we've been hearing all summer that it was going to be done or on the fall that it was going to be done and paved. I know it's not your fault, but is this the same company that did Churchill a couple years ago?
Yes, it is.
So Churchill was worse than the Groveland project. Churchill was.
They're all paved, I don't know who's worse.
Well, I specifically remember Churchill because I walked that street several times a week, but they dumped all their stuff on Churchill and then it was more than a month that it sat there and it just was, it was a problem. And I, at the time, asked if we could put some, something in our contracts to penalize them for making us go last because my fear is that, because we're such a small city and we don't have giant contracts, that these guys let our stuff sit until the very end and then they say, oh gee, it's too cold to pave, so you gotta, I mean, these residents have to live there every day. So I'm just wondering, and maybe this is for the Law Director, can we put some kind of penalty provision in the contracts so if they don't finish by a certain amount of time, they forfeit a certain amount of money because it's, I'm, it's, we continually have to give our residents just really sad looks and say, gee, I'm sorry, but. looks and say, "Gee, I'm sorry, but..." And then list the excuses.
We can't under law. I mean, we, we, we would have to negotiate that. They'd have to agree to it, but Mr. Chuni and I can discuss that and how we, I want to tweak the, the form.
Well, so what's the name of the company that did these two projects?
This is Noce Enterprises.
So...
N-O-C-E, Noce.
So Noce Enterprises, at this point, I'm wondering if, if they're the lowest bid, if in my mind, they'll be the best bid next year because this is, now they're on strike too, as far as I'm concerned. And I realize, this isn't you, and you had nothing to do with this, but it was a delay here, a delay, and now it's these residents. The street, the street's a mess. It's not just, there's equipment everywhere. There's a corner at Milton and Groveland. There's like a quarter inch of mud everywhere, and that's not cleaned up. And I just, it's, it's the little things that these companies don't deal with, and it's the little things that make the residents so rankled, you know, when it doesn't turn out. So I just, it's, I'm, I'm, I wish it could have turned out better. Is, is there, what do residents do? I talked to a guy who said, they hooked up his water line and it broke, and he didn't realize it until next morning, so his yard was full of water, and there was, he thinks, doesn't know if there's damage to his house. What do I tell these people? Is there a number to call? Do we have reserves in case there are damages that the, that the company has to fix?
I didn't hear about that problem, but the contractor is responsible for any of that?
Right. So should these people call us? Should we have them call the contractor? How do we, how do we deal with those kind of issues?
I'll take that complaint and do it to me.
Okay.
I'll choose it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, also, every resident would have received a letter from Noce Enterprises that includes phone numbers for reporting incidents of this sort. So, so every resident should have received that information to be able to make those calls as well.
Well, I don't know where the hangup is, but the guy that talked to me said, "Who do I call about this?" So...
Well, they probably didn't keep the, the letter.
Or...
But it's also, but also if they'd called here, we could have directed them too. So this is...
Look, I'm, I'm sure this is just a misunderstanding. I'm, I want to be able to tell these people, give them concrete advice rather than just say, you know...
No pun intended.
"Oh gee, gosh."
Right.
What's too called to give them asphalt advice?
Well, right, right. But also, but also, you know, I, you know, I, I understand your concerns. I mean, the thing is, is this project was supposed to take twelve weeks, and twelve weeks would have been, was, was up the week before last Thursday. So the thing is, is they played it pretty close. You know, if it had been done in exactly twelve weeks, yeah, there's probably time to have paved if it had been done last week. But, but there were delays that came up with respect to the water department, with respect to water testing, and, and these are things that were, I don't want to say they were unavoidable, but they were also foreseeable. So when you start as late as you do, you're really playing it close. You don't have much margin for error. So the margin for error ends up being, we don't get Groveland repaved until next year. Now, you know, on balance, you know, if the trench work is done and, and if things are cleaned up, and it's just, you know, a matter of paving, you know, there's almost something to be said for having fresh pavement after the winter instead of right before the winter. So, so there is that. But, but it would be satisfying to just say it's done. And it's not going to be done.
Right, right. Well, I appreciate it.
And I've gotten calls about Groveland almost every day, especially the last two, three weeks, from residents who are rightly concerned. You know, winter's coming, and this isn't done yet.
Well, to that point then, Mayor, may I ask if you received a call from a lady who said that near her driveway, there's a, a mountain of concrete, just sitting there?
Possibly. I've gotten a lot of calls.
Okay. All right.
And give me the address when we make sure that gets cleared.
Well, that's, yes, that's, that's the best thing, is if specific matters at specific addresses are a lot easier to get to know, to make sure that they are...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. Chuni, I really appreciate your willingness to take, take the, take a complaint. I, I appreciate it that you're doing. I had another question about a, a gentleman who crosses the street at East Carroll and Green Road. You know, with the coal now, there's a lot of people crossing the street. What is the procedure for adding a street light or some kind of street lighting to that particular? There's a, there's a, there's a crosswalk there, the traffic, I'm sorry, a lamp. There's a traffic light and a crosswalk, but the crosswalk's not lit. So is that, is that our job? Is that, does the county do that? Is that...
It's C I. I mean, C I owns all, all the streetlights in town. We pay a light bill every month based on the number of lights that are out there. If we want to add one, we have to call and...
So if we bring it to their attention, maybe they'll come out and let, that's sort of the...
It's based on the number of streetlights we have.
Did the gentleman come here last week, or, right, was he from...
Yeah, Mr. Smalley.
He gave us his card?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't realize it was that dark. Do you think it's not clear enough?
It's, I, I think...
I don't know if the polls in the beachside are now where you're leaving.
They're on our side, they're on our side, but they're, they're staggered so that they don't, that, that's, that light's relatively new, so there, there wasn't one traditionally there, so that's, okay, I'll call them. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Chuni?
No, but I do have a comment from Mr. Weisman.
Take a picture of it.
That he could talk to police chief as well about the issue being one of safety.
Okay, yes.
And then he can help direct the outcome of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Okay. Very, very good. Next up is communication, civic engagement. Mr. Cook is, well, it's in his report, so he starts off by saying, "I apologize for not being able to attend tonight's meeting. As the mayor reads this, I am attending my daughter's soccer banquet. The University of Ida Civic Awards were held last Wednesday. The event surpassed our expectations, especially since the city hasn't thrown an event like this in nearly a decade. Over one hundred and sixty people attended. The guests arrived happy and left even happier. If you missed the event or would like to relive some of the highlights, there are photos on our Facebook page plus a link to the Cleveland.com article. Also, the event will be covered on the front page of the next edition of The Heights Observer. One eight-eight-eight Ohio Comp donated one hundred turkeys to the city, and on Friday, we got all the turkeys to people who need them. By that measure, our first-ever turkey giveaway was a success. Last week, Councilwoman Michelle Weiss recommended hosting a holiday food drive. As such, we're going to team up with the Greater Cleveland Food Bank to hold a peanut butter drive at City Hall the week after Thanksgiving, November twenty-sixth through November thirtieth. Residents may drop off jars of peanut butter at City Hall during regular office hours. I'm continuing to work to support Susan Drucker's great efforts on Small Business Saturday. The event and participating businesses are being promoted on social media and in our city newsletter. Our second Hollywood movie trailer-style promotional video launched earlier today." So how about that? And that concludes Mr. Cook's report. Economic development. Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I would have a lot more to say with the exception of the mayor, Mike Cook, and Jim and Reynolds. I have much more to report. But I do want to thank the mayor for his promotion of Small Business Saturday. This has been our final push. I'd also like to thank Mike Cook for his assistance. If you haven't seen his videos, they are brilliant. So he has done videos, he's the newsletter, and then all of his social media promotions about Small Business Saturday. He's been a tremendous help, really getting the word out there about this program. And, and one thing I want to counsel, know that although this idea was about promoting the idea of shopping local at our, in our small businesses throughout our community, it started as a one-day event from, a program offered from American Express. But my goal is to have additional shopping events throughout the year, go through shopping, local, thinking small, supporting our small businesses, and holding it on other days other than just one Saturday, so that we can include all of our businesses, including the Sabbath-observing Jewish businesses in our community. So this was just, just because of the timing of when I started, then this event was coming, it was good timing for this Small Business Saturday event. I just thought it's a great springboard to bring this into more of an internal program where we can then support all of our businesses at different events throughout the year. So you'll be hearing more about those for next year. I do want to thank you, Council, for approving the resolution, support of the application for the supplemental grant. I think this is a way, this grant, I forgot to mention, it has to be submitted by November thirtieth, and in the, we know by the first of the year if we've been approving it, so I repeat, Council, informed as to what's going on with that grant. Today, Patrick and I attended a workshop on Ohio Community Reinvestment Areas that was sponsored by the Auditor of State's Office. It was an informative meeting and will help us get this program, our CRA program, up and running and compliant with all the state laws. So that was well worth our time. I do want to congratulate Patrick on his promotion, his department. It's well deserved. He's been tremendous to work with, and so I, and I know he'll do a great job with the housing. And then I'd like to just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Anything for Mrs. Drucker? Ms. Drucker? All right, very good. Don't forget to shop on Saturday and throughout the season at our local businesses. All right. Next up is community development.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for passing the legislation tonight. I look forward to the long, hard work ahead of us, the brighter future at the end of that. And the fun part about collaborating so much and coming at the end of the meeting is pretty much everyone's given the report I had laid out. But I am working with Joe and with our finance department to get our reimbursement for the CDBG funds for Cedar Beach Crosswalks. So we'll get that in hopefully by the end of the year, the reimbursement. And also, the Sophie River Park is moving along and is slated for completion by the end of the year as well. If you haven't seen it, it is really something to look at. It'll be a great little oasis for the residents there. So that's all I have to report.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Rogenmeyer?
Yes, I can. Sir, I looked up, I don't know where I was at now, one of the little newsletter magazine type places. And Cleveland Heights was offering a leadership training program. And initially, it seemed like it would be open to everyone. However, upon discovery, as I read further, I found out it was for a CDBG block grant proposal. So it was specific to Cleveland Heights residents. And I was hoping that perhaps we could do a little research, or I was hoping you could do a little research and see if it was possible for us to come up with a grant, a similar type of program for our city, so that, that our citizens would be able to, if they had an idea, they'd be able to realize their idea with a thousand-dollar grant as well. So I'm just hoping to see if we could find out more about that particular program.
If you'd like to give me some money, I'm happy to put on a grant.
I bet you would.
No, I, I will take it in, and look at, I know Mrs. Drucker had given me the note from the last meeting. So I did start doing some research and did come across the same information, I guess I might come across.
Oh, all right, great.
So as far as the mini-grants...
That'd be awesome.
It's something we can look into and consider, maybe even reverse CDBG application next year.
Right. And then I wanted to tell the powers that be, if it's you or whomever in our city, the little mini-park looks fantastic. The park on Sils Beach is really shaping up really well. It looks very inviting, and I can't wait to see little kids playing there.
Yes.
It's going to be nice. Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
I'm especially looking forward to the nest. All right. Speaking of, this may be a little, did you get the change order that I signed this morning?
I did, I have one more for you.
Oh, okay, very good, yes. All right. Okay, good. Anything else for Mr. Rogenmeyer? All right, very good. Then that takes us to council committees, building. Mr. Weisman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is going to be a building department meeting, or, I don't know. I encourage every member of ten on December fifth, seven o'clock, council chambers. We will be there to discuss the residents and how they think that they might lend advice to the city to, to coordinate our efforts in terms of the new building department and housing department and how maybe we assist them. Mostly pertaining to renters and, and the situation there. Wanted to tell the young lady who was here before, but she, she went out, probably to watch the football game, but hopefully we'll get word to her as well. But December fifth.
What time?
I think it's a Wednesday, seven o'clock.
Very good. Very good. All right, so December fifth, seven o'clock, building committee meeting. Civic information, Pam Cameron.
Well, I don't have anything, because everybody's done everything. I have, that's one of the reasons I want, I was looking into the leadership program, so that I could come up with some great ideas and be part of the excitement in the city. But it looks like I might have to take a backseat.
Nobody takes a backseat to you, Pam.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's a really great attitude and accurate, too. No report.
Very good, thanks. I'm not even sure if I said that right. I'm so sorry. You know what I meant.
No, it was, it was not right.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, man. I'm going to pay you back.
Yeah, I, I know you will. Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Finance, the Superdy.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee met on November seventh for the first budget meeting. This was just the finance committee. We received a great deal of paper, I think, are these the packets?
Yes.
Okay, so those are your packets from the initial budget meeting, and the finance director provided us again with a great deal of information, broken down to a very granular detail. He also has provided things that we have asked for. The next two meetings are December third and tenth. No? The third?
I thought they were both before the city council meetings.
They are, so what's that, second?
Seventeenth.
Thank you. The third and the fifteenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, six o'clock PM, before council. We're having a hard time setting up meetings. An hour is not a lot of time, so if we need to, we'll go ahead and spend more time reviewing the budget. I know all of us would like to be able to pass it by the end of the year, but we will take the time we need with the budget because that's very important. We're also involving the advisory committee. They'll be attending, and I've heard back from some of them. So that will be another element that will be very interesting. I would ask that anything you have that we can send out ahead of time to them would be very helpful.
Yeah, my, my goal is to have something by the end of the week, probably, realistically, it's the end of the weekend, to go out to the committees to have that information. Right now, I've got all of it into the spreadsheet I have, and trying to kind of manipulate it, clean it up, and make it a little more presentable in the way in which finance had directed me at the meeting.
Excellent.
Okay.
Okay. I am open to any thoughts any of you have on this. This hasn't been our most smooth or early starting year, but you know, we're getting a grip around finance, and we're getting far better information than we ever have before. And it's really late, so it's hard to remember dates.
That's all right. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Purdy. Next is governmental affairs. Mrs. Weiss, she's not here. I don't know if anybody from that committee has a report. I do know that there's a doodle poll out that Kelly put out where Mrs. Weiss is looking to schedule the meeting on either Monday, December tenth, or Tuesday, December eleventh, at seven PM. So if you have, if you would be, if somebody would be being polled on that, please respond to the poll, and we will, Kelly will set the meeting.
Do you know what the subject matter is?
I'm going to guess...
Setting the CRC, I think, representatives?
Well, setting the CIC, the CIC meeting itself, we also want to schedule, you know, I blocked out the 11th. So that is something where we would really need those CIC representatives by the next meeting, which would be the 3rd. I don't know.
You'll have them.
Okay. Well, you've probably already thought about who you want, so...
No, I put out a call and asked who wants to sit.
Okay, very good.
So thank you.
How many council representatives would it be?
Well, I think it's, let's see, Luke, it's the Vice Mayor plus the Council Representative plus a community member appointed by the Council. Is that correct?
You know, I'd have to look at the ordinance. I thought there were two council members.
Are there two council members?
In addition to the Vice Mayor.
I think so, too.
Seven, two, seven people, right?
Right. So...
I've got it sitting available, so in fact, do I have it here?
Right. It's, I want to say it's Mayor, Vice Mayor, Economic Development, Community Development.
Two members of council.
Two members, okay, two members of council.
To the Vice Mayor and then an appointee.
Appointee, so that's seven.
Yeah.
That sounds right.
When I email all of you for your suggestions, I will have done this after I review the CRC we passed. So we'll know exactly what we're doing instead of trying to figure it out right now.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah, and you need it by the next council meeting.
Please.
Yeah. You'll have it.
Excellent. All right, very good. Recreation, Mr. Erdl, already said he has no reports. Safety, Mr. Rock.
Yes, Mayor. We did meet today as a council of the whole, so I don't want to steal your thunder, Vice Mayor Purdy, but I'll just mention that we are discussing the new ladder truck. We do need to schedule another meeting, whether it be a joint finance and safety meeting to discuss the financing options, but we definitely need to have a meeting very soon because as we all know, the cost of the ladder truck will increase after the first of the year with, number one, inflation, tariffs, cost of financing, all three of those factors are going to weigh on our costs. So we really, really got to interact together, meet very soon. I know we have a lot of meetings in December, but I would appreciate if we could, if we could just even do a joint meeting to discuss the financing and the ladder truck all in one meeting, it'd be great.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Service Utilities, Mr. Sims.
A report.
Yeah, very good. Committee of the Whole, Ms. Purdy.
Thank you, Mayor. At 6 o'clock tonight, we had a Committee of the Whole meeting to review the ladder truck, gain information about the ladder truck, whether we needed a ladder truck, whether we should refurbish the old ladder truck, what the financing is. Chief Perko provided us with a PowerPoint. It was extremely informative. There was a lot of information involved. It was worthwhile. I think we could start by probably agreeing that we do need a ladder truck. Best practices suggest that you retire a ladder truck after 25 years and ours is 28 years old. So we have gotten our life out of it, which is the way University Heights works, sort of squeeze every last drop, but it's time to look at something new. There are other options, but basically we are looking, the committee, the chief reference that he's worked with has basically decided on a model that fits in the station, that fits our needs, that is really a good option. So I'm not sure how the timing of this works. I think another meeting would be great, but I also wonder if we could just go straight to discussing the financing options and getting it into the budget at the next budget meeting. I'm not sure what left we have to do, except that everybody wasn't there at the Committee of the Whole meeting. So maybe we can talk about that. Anyway, it was an excellent meeting and thank you, Chief Perko. That gave us a lot of information.
So essentially, we need to make sure the three members of council who weren't there be able to...
Have someone, yeah.
Chief Perko, I'd like to know, is it possible for you to send a PowerPoint to the other members of council?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I think Mr. Sims would like to see that.
Or all of us. If you send it to the clerk, she could send it to all of us. That would be great. Thank you.
That would be awesome.
Mr. Weisman.[1671.13]